Tuesday, September 27, 2022. Time is 2:00 p.m. This is our weekly business meeting. I am trying to officiate this remotely, so please bear with me. At this time, I'll announce that attending our commissioners, Brooks and Filios, Commissioner Leslie Duncan is excused, attending IAC. And at this time, we'll have 30 seconds of silence, please. Okay, thank you, everyone. And now we'll turn to the Pledge of Allegiance, since I'm not there to see. But everyone, I'm going to ask Asa Gray if you would please lead us in the pledge, Asa, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Go right ahead, Bill.
Okay, I move that we approve the meeting minutes, 1 through 3.
Okay, let's back up for just a moment. We're going to strike item 8 from the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I've already spoken. You heard from Nick Snyder and Leslie. So can I have a motion to strike item 8, please?
I move that we strike item 8 from the agenda.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye. Motion is carried to strike item 8. Go right ahead, Bill.
Okay. I move that we approve the meeting minutes, items 1 through 3.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye. And the motion is carried. Okay, item S, approval of the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, items 4 and 5.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem, oh, Abbott, sorry. Chairman Filios.
All right. Aye. And motion is carried. Approval of the payables list.
I move that we approve the payables list for the week, September 19 through 23, 2022, in the amount of $639,183.17, with jury panel payments in the amount of $3,114.71.
Okay, before I second, I do want to indicate that the patrol budget, the sheriff's patrol budget, is overspent by about $15,000. Not necessarily a big issue, because the auditor balances it at the end of the year. But several months ago, we did take up the question that if money needs to be moved between or among line items, that we please be advised that there's a need to do so. So it's not necessarily only left to the end of the calendar year. And I will second Bill's motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye. And the motion is carried. What I'm going to do at this time is move a couple of the items, specifically items 27 and 28, to the beginning, to precede item number 7. And what I'm going to do is ask Asa Gray, we have a situation that's developing. And what I'm going to do, Asa, is let's take the easy one first. The items, while related, are not necessarily connected. So would you mind if we take up item 28 before 27? Does that work for you?
That's totally fine with me, Chairman Filios.
Okay. So basically, item 28 is to approve the ballot order. And unless, Bill, do you have any questions with regard to this?
I do not.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I move, excuse me, let me get this. I move that we approve, no, that's right. I move that we approve, request for ballot order per IC 34-902, November 8, 2022, general election.
Before I second, Asa, did you want to add anything?
No, I think everything that I would say is already contained in the documents.
Okay, fair enough. I will second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, motion is carried. So now we'll take up item 27, which is to designate the polling places for Idaho Code 37-302. And it has come to my attention, and this is nothing new necessarily, that there are some concerns regarding one of the polling locations. And I'm specifically referring to Candlelight Christian Fellowship. Now, just a little bit of history for all of us here is one of the reasons Candlelight Christian was chosen was because there was difficulty in securing other locations, whether because of a lack of space, a lack of interest, or some other reason. But there are concerns that have been expressed, and I have heard from no fewer than 35 people today asking that because of the partisanship displayed by the church, that we locate and make an effort to locate another location, another polling place. And so it has also come to my attention that there is one available. It had been explored in the past, but for one reason or another, I don't know, I think it had to do with perhaps our being charged. But in any case, that doesn't appear to be the case. And there are, the polling location is known as 403. My understanding is there are a couple of, when I say a couple, I think specifically two precincts that would be voting at Candlelight. So at this time, I would like to ask Asa, Asa, have you explored another location?
Commissioner Filios, thank you for giving the background on how Candlelight came to be a polling place. I do greatly appreciate that. Just to add a couple things to that, when we did, we were in another facility, a church in 2020. And when COVID hit, that facility was very, they were not very clear on what their requirements were going to be. At one point, they said they were only going to allow our poll workers to have 20 people in the building for two precincts. At another point later, they were like, oh, well, we don't have to adhere that strictly. But we couldn't go with the back and forth. We needed something solid for our voters. So we went to Lake City High School for the 2020 general. We used Lake City for that election. And I'm not sure if we used it one or two after that. Then Lake City, the day before one of our elections, decided they would move us from their gym into a library that voters then had massive difficulty finding. We heard lots of complaints about that move and about the lack of any type of notice, really. So we moved out of Lake City. And that is when Candlelight approached us about using their kind of all-purpose room-type thing, gym, all-purpose room, whatever they officially call it. And we have been there since. Now, I will say, in regards to looking forward at precincts for this election and going into 2023, the main thing that we looked at for this year after the primary was statute 34-302 that is referenced on the agenda, which states, if I may read a little bit of it, "The board shall, by the fifth Friday before any election, designate a suitable polling place for each election precinct. Insofar as possible, the board shall designate the same polling place for the general election that it designated for the primary election." And then it goes on to talk about physical arrangements for all voters to be able to cast a secret ballot, public school facilities, and so on. So really, that was our main driver in not looking elsewhere for this specific election, was that statute of trying to keep these polling places the same for the primary and general. In fact, I'll mention on our polling place list, only one polling place is different than it was in the primary, which is, we used to be, precinct 506 used to be in St. George's Catholic Church in Post Falls. They are having construction at that facility. They let us know right before and right after the primary and would not be available for any potential August or November elections. So we are down the street at Post Falls Middle School. So I personally, obviously, I don't have the full decision-making. The clerk is my boss, and of course, you guys have the ability to designate these. But my personal stake in this was simply following the statute of trying to keep these the same for both the primary and the general. And I'm open to suggestions when it comes to calendar year 2023 and our polling places, for any polling place, for that matter, that people have problems with.
Okay, so when you talk about the fifth Friday preceding the election, what is that date?
If I remember, if memory serves me correctly, that would be in approximately nine days, 10 days? Because our election is not over yet.
Okay, so that would be, yeah, Friday, October 7.
Yes, if my recollection serves me right, yes.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is, we normally open up for public comment at the end of our meetings. And what I'm going to do at this time is I'm going to allow any, three people to speak who have expressed concerns about Candlelight Christian as a polling location. And I'm going to limit each speaker to three minutes. And so if anybody wishes to come forward, please do so. And please give us your name. Does anybody wish to speak?
Yes, please. My name is Alicia Abbott. And I am--
Alicia, you need to turn your mic on?
Which little button?
Yeah, please turn the mic on.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Alicia Abbott, and I am an outreach coordinator for the Idaho 97 Project. And I'm a resident of Bonner County here in North Idaho. Part of the work I contribute to is research regarding anti-government extremism, Christian nationalism, and white supremacy. You've already seen me a few times this summer, so you know that I've been observing Cootney County during the month of August. During that observation, I met with Cootney County citizens who expressed their concern about one of the polling locations in their community, the Candlelight Christian Fellowship. I know commissioners have been receiving emails from concerned citizens regarding this location. And I urge you to take the time to go over these concerns. Unfortunately, there are also people who are afraid to raise their concerns for fear of being targeted for political harassment. This is why I'm here today. Recently, there has been very public rhetoric and iconography presented at Candlelight events and on their property that makes some voters feel unwelcome and sometimes at risk for targeted harassment. In addition, Pastor Paul Vanoyt has electioneered during meetings at Candlelight to his congregation and is on the record of a Coeur d'Alene City Council meeting stating that he is free to discriminate where the government cannot. He has repeated these sentiments to his congregation. And all of this can be found on their very public YouTube channel. It is clear from my documentation that Candlelight Christian Fellowship is not a space where we can consider neutral or welcome to all. I didn't want to blindside you at this meeting and sent some examples of why citizens may not feel safe voting in the Candlelight polling location. But I'm also providing you with a thumb drive today of additional examples and a short report detailing citizen concerns. On August 17, 2022, CCF Pastor Paul Vanoyt asked his congregation to vote no on the recent school facilities levy. There are multiple examples of political proselytizing on their public YouTube channel. On June 7, 2022, CCF Pastor Paul Vanoyt stated in a Coeur d'Alene City Council meeting that while the council may not be able to discriminate against people, that he in fact could be repeated his sentiments in his sermon. And during the summer months--
We're just about--
Okay. During the summer months, you can see supremacist iconography and messages promoting violence along Highway 95 as they invite a vendor to sell political memorabilia in their parking lot during the summers. So I urge the commissioners to make this change. Polling locations should feel safe for everyone. And please just, please listen to all of the emails and concerns from citizens. I appreciate it.
Specifically, what kind of iconography have you observed?
Included on the thumb drive are photos specifically of Christian nationalist flags that have been seen along Highway 95. There is iconography expressing violence toward people of differing political ideologies through bumper stickers and postcards. In addition, there is, you know, Confederate iconography. And to some Americans, this is seen as a racist image.
You mean, this is on the property of--
Correct.
Okay.
And I have that thumb drive I would like to give to you.
Thank you very much.
So Alicia, before we let you go, one other question. Can you share with us what you think the alternative, a suitable alternative location is?
Yes, in working with Cootney County citizens who are concerned, they knew the biggest challenge to commissioners and the elections office would be finding an alternative location. So we pounded pavement. And when asked viable locations, if they would be interested, and the Community United Methodist Church has committed to filling that need if the commissioners choose to change that location.
And are there any plans for the church to charge the county?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Does anyone else wish to speak, please?
Hi, Chris, it's Deborah Rose. I'm here as a Cootney County resident who has been working with Alicia and has had the same concerns that she does. I've heard from many, many people concerned about going to the Candlelight Church to vote, considering the political climate over there. They don't feel safe entering that building. And we have worked to locate another facility for the county for these polling, two polling places, as Alicia stated, that can be replaced by the Methodist Church. I think it is in the community's best interest to move these polling places to the Methodist Church where voters will feel welcome and comfortable to go vote. We do not want to do anything that would discourage people from voting. Thank you.
Okay. One more. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Good afternoon, Chris. Nice to be here with you.
Yep.
Paul Vanoyt, pastor at Candlelight Christian Fellowship. I just want to go on record that we are a welcoming congregation. And inasmuch as we are indeed conservative, and many of our members endorse and embrace conservative values, we want to be very welcoming. We want to serve our community. We want people to come and go freely. We are open-door policy with everyone. We absolutely are a safe place for people. And the idea that someone would consider it an unsafe place is something outside of anything I could imagine. We've never caused harm or hurt anyone. We want to serve our community. We want to serve you. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Pastor Vanoyt. Since two people had spoken for an alternative location and Pastor Vanoyt wants to maintain Candlelight, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of maintaining Candlelight as a polling location?
Commissioner, this is Eric Koenig. I'm the facility administrator at Candlelight. I'm in charge of security and operations of the facility and property. We do provide a safe haven for voters. And we also protect the election laws by, with the signage that you have spoken, I heard today about that. We adhere to the boundaries that are set by the elections committee and double-check with that. So I wanted to say that we've done everything we can to make people feel welcome. I have greeters there to help facilitate the handicap to vote in our facility. And it is a safe place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bill, do you have any thoughts, please?
Yeah, I got, I think, probably the same number and emails from the same people that you did. And I'm concerned that people do have a place where they feel comfortable or safe. I don't see any allegations of overt occurrences where they weren't. But Clerk Brandon, what would you suggest to people who don't feel safe?
Thank you, Commissioner. One thing that Mr. Gray did not tell you is that if we do change a polling place, we have to do a mailing for those precincts. And with precinct 403 and 405 being located, it would be about $1,400 to do the mailing at this time. If Candlelight gives people concern about their safety, there are other options. There are early voting, which starts two weeks before, and there's absentee voting. I think I will weigh in that this has been, we've had absolutely no troubles on Election Day at Candlelight. The same could not be said for United Community Methodist Church.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so Clerk Brandon, can you elaborate on that last statement?
Mr. Gray alluded to it when he said, when he said that they wanted to limit us to 20 people in the building with two polling locations. And, excuse me, I'm speaking now, thank you. And all I can say is, that is, they wanted to change their mind later. We don't get that ability to change polling places at the drop of a hat. They also charged us $200 every election. Candlelight Christian Fellowship, along with most of our precincts, have never charged us.
May I say something that you--
Excuse me, who's speaking?
May I say something? This is Alicia Abbott again. United Methodist Church is currently under new leadership. They have a new Reverend named Amanda Nickel, and she took over midsummer. So this is under new decision-making. And this has had full board approval from their church.
Fair enough. Okay, is Dave Ferguson there?
Yes, I'm here, Chris.
Okay, and Dave, you might want to speak up. At this point, I think we're going to move forward, possibly to a motion. But I guess this is more or less a point of order. If it is possible to use facilities at United Methodist Church, and in the board, in case we decide as a board to provide that direction, do you need a formal motion? Or do you just simply provide direction? How do you suggest we handle it?
Well, I think you can make the motion to approve the polling places, except for the location change. Because the polling place resolution includes, the version that I'm looking at includes Candlelight Christian. So I think you'd want to make it clear that the resolution that you're approving has a change in what the change is.
Okay, understood.
Commissioner Filios--
Okay, so, yeah, go right ahead, Asa.
I don't know if I have the right to ask this, but maybe Mr. Ferguson could comment on if we're going to have any issues with the statute of if we change it, since the statute does say, "Insofar as possible, we should designate the same for primary and the general." I just don't want our office to get in trouble.
I don't know, I haven't--
Go right ahead.
I haven't been asked to look into that issue before. I'm not sure I can really comment on it. I'd be happy to provide an opinion to the board or to the clerk after this meeting.
That would be fine. Please do so. Bill, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I think that would be nice if Dave could weigh in from a legal standpoint, and we would take this up next Tuesday.
Okay.
Can I just ask--
Here's my--
Before you move on, if you're going to ask for a legal opinion, if you would, after this meeting, could you reduce it to something in writing so I'm clear on what the issues are?
Sure.
There's several issues that I think are implicated in these discussions. So I don't want to just opine. If there are specific issues you'd like me to address, please send those to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so let me jump in here. Whether or not Candlelight is a safe location, maybe that's a matter of opinion. I'm sure, I shouldn't say I'm sure, but I can't imagine that they're threatening people as people are coming in. On the other hand, there is a great deal of concern over the, and I'm not going to say partisanship, but hyper-partisanship nature of the church. And at one point in our lives, I used to, we, my wife and I, used to attend Candlelight Christian. My position here is pretty straightforward. I supported the optional form of government. And in fact, I seriously considered putting it on the ballot so you, the people, could vote. And I believe I would have had a second from Bill Brooks to be able to do that. I chose not to do it. And the reason I chose not to do it is because I didn't want to further divide our community. Our nation is already divided, and I think we're divided as a community. And from the same perspective, I cannot support the continuance of Candlelight Christian as a polling location. I understand the statute, and I understand when Asa Gray said, "As much as possible, we ought to maintain the same polling location as chosen in the primary." But I think there are some very serious concerns here. So while I'm willing to obviously appeal for an opinion, a legal opinion, what I would like to do at this time is put forward a motion that we approve the polling locations with the exception of Candlelight Christian and another location, specifically United Methodist, to be approached to see if in fact they can provide, you know, the adequate facilities that we need. And if that's not the case, then clearly we have another decision to make. But if it is, I would like to move forward. So basically, I'm going to formalize this into a motion. And my motion is to move forward with approving the designated polling places with the exception of what is number 403, which is Candlelight Christian Fellowship, pending an acceptable response from United Methodist Church to be able to accommodate the county's needs. As far, and I'm going to leave it at that, source of funds, we're going to use contingency if we have to for any additional mailing. And that's the end of my motion. Is there a second?
There is. Could we add to that, that also pending a receipt of some legal opinion from legal?
Absolutely. So I'll amend the motion that the opinion, that the legal opinion indicates that in fact, the Board of County Commissioners does in fact have the jurisdiction and the authority to proceed.
Chris, it looks like Candlelight is designated as 403 and 405, but you only said 403.
Oh, I see.
Oh, I'm sorry, 403 and 405. Let's amend the motion to include that. Thank you.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, the motion is carried. So Asa, I presume that between now and also Clerk Brandon and the fifth, excuse me, October 7, which is the fifth Friday, we'll have a determination, a legal opinion. And Dave, I will certainly forward a formal request to you. Okay, then, so let's move on. Moving back up to what was item 1? Oops.
Item 7, Chris.[1783.86]
Item seven.
Item seven, forgive me, okay.
That's okay. I, I asked that this item be put on the agenda, board approval request for, to appoint a new chairman for the B O C C. And before I get into this in great depth and detail, I want to say that Chris has been a great chairman. I haven't always agreed with him on everything, but he's always been respectful, and he's always been looking out for the people of Cootney County. And right now, it's difficult. I've worked from home quite a bit. I know how difficult it is, let alone working at home while you're trying to chair the B O C C. So, Chris, do you have anything you would like to say?
Yeah, I think, you know, Leslie has certainly done a good job of running the meetings over the past few weeks. I am today three weeks out of what really was major surgery. I'm recovering well, but for the next couple of weeks, I'm still going to have to work from home. And then if I come into the office, it'll be, you know, on a limited basis, but yes, they will be available for most of the meetings. And so I think it's appropriate. I think it's only fair to the residents of Cootney County. And let's face it, in January, I'm riding, riding off into the sunset, so to speak. And so I think it's entirely appropriate. And at the same time, I would suggest that we nominate Bill Brooks as the chairman pro temp. So Leslie Duncan as chairman, Bill Brooks as chairman pro temp. Bill, would you like to make the motion?
No, you go ahead and make it.
Okay, so I move that with regard to the chairmanship of the Board of County Commissioners effective October 1 of 2022, which incidentally is the beginning of the fiscal '23 year for the county, that Commissioner Leslie Duncan serve as the chairman, and Commissioner Bill Brooks as chairman pro temp. End of motion.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, motion is carried. And for the benefit of those who might not understand the role of the chairman, every decision we make, irrespective of who the chairman is, is always a vote of two out of three. The chairman's primary role is to officiate, to manage through the meeting, and, well, technically, the staff reports to the chairman. But once again, every decision is a vote of two out of three. No individual commissioner has any more authority than any other. But I thought I would just mention that. With that having been said, let's move on. Item eight has been stricken. Let's go to item nine. And what have we got here?
Stephen Keergard.
Commissioner Stephen Keergard for the record.
Go right ahead, Stephen.
Commissioner Stephen Keergard for the record. This is a construction agreement for the snow removal equipment building with the county and T M L Construction. It is for bid schedules A, B, C, D, and E of our bid for the snow removal building. It is in the amount of $1,783,000. And it is a 90% grant with the FAA, which we resigned last, or two weeks ago, and we expect between 2.5% and 5% from the FAA as well. And this is just an agreement between us and T M L.
Understood. Bill, any questions?
None.
Motion, please.
I'd like to move that we approve the construction agreement for the snow removal equipment, S R E, building with T M L Construction for the airport.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, motion is carried. Item 10, please, security services agreement with Fernand Park with Northern State Security. Nick Snyder?
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick Snyder for the record. Before you, with our annual contract renewal with Northern State Security, which provides security services at Fernand Park, essentially Commissioners, they lock and open the gate each day for us. There are no increases over last year, and I recommend you sign it.
Bill, any questions?
No questions.
Motion, please.
I move that we approve the security services agreement for Fernand Park with Northern State Security and Parks and Waterways.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Excuse me, item 12, grant closeout fiscal year '22 voting safety grant.
Number 11.
Oh, I'm sorry, missed 11. Sorry, Silverwood Scarywood, 2022 Halloween, excuse me, Halloween season at Silverwood Theme Park with our Sheriff's Organization. Lieutenant Sifferd, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is just another agreement. There's no major changes. It's the same thing we've been doing for the past several years for Scarywood, basically to have deputies on contract available on site for any problems that may occur.
Motion?
I move that we approve the Silverwood Scarywood 2022 Halloween season agreement with Silverwood Theme Park and their Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Item 12, grant closeout fiscal year '22 voting safety grant with the Idaho Department of Parks and Rec, the $112,712 cash match from the vessel account of $56,356. And this is our Sheriff's Organization. Kim, are you speaking to this? Kim Riley?
Yes, thank you, Kim Riley, for the record. This is the FY '22 voting safety grant. We fully expended the award, and we will be requesting reimbursement in the amount of $112,712.
Bill, any questions?
No questions.
So just for the record, Kim, the $56,000 and change, is that, is that the match?
Yes, my understanding is, my understanding is that was to come from the vessel account, and auditor was aware of this closeout report.
Okay, got it. Motion?
I move that we approve the grant closeout for FY '22 voting and safety grant with the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation, I D P R, in the amount of $112,000, $112,702, a cash match vessel account of $56,356 with their Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, motion is carried. Item 13, Motorola Solutions, excuse me, emergency call works maintenance contract renewal with Motorola Solutions for our 911 organization. Colin?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Colin McRoy for the record. This is just our annual maintenance agreement with Motorola for emergency call works, 911 phone system. This is a budgeted FY '23 item with contracts starting October 1st. Slight increase over previous year as is standard of just under $5,000 for the increase. So total contract is $97,615.63.
Okay, sounds good to me. Bill, any questions?
No questions.
Motion?
I move that we approve the Motorola Solutions Emergency Call slash, excuse me, Call Works Maintenance Contract Renewal with Motorola Solutions for 911.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Item 14, Motorola Solutions, again, Astro System Maintenance Contract for 911, again. Colin?
Commissioners, this is the radio system contract, maintenance contract renewal, annual contract we hold each year for break fix maintenance on the tower sites and the dispatch center. Is a FY '23 budgeted item, contract starting October 1st, and increase over the previous year is just over $13,000, and total contract is $1,800, one, excuse me, $186,888.
Okay, Bill, any questions?
No. No. I move that we approve the Motorola Solutions Astro System Maintenance Contract with Motorola Solutions and 911.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. The next three items are for Kim Riley. First one is item 15, Grant Agreement Number 02270KC with F T A, Federal Transportation Administration, 5310 Purchase of Service. For Idaho, 2020-026, Idaho Transportation Department, for $181,000. The cash and kind match is $45,350. Kim, please, for the Resource Management Office.
Yes, thank you, Kim Riley, again for the record. This is our next two-year agreement of 5310 funds, which funds our Ring-A-Ride program. The cash match is provided by the area agency on aging, and anytime that we need additional in-kind match, that's funded through our, the wages that are paid by Cootney County.
Okay. Bill, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, let me, I'll give you a break on the next three. I'll do them.
Oh, good.
Okay, so I move I move that we approve Grant Agreement 02270KC with the F T A, 5310 Purchase of Service. I'm not going to complete the statement because it was already alluded to when we opened the item up. And is there a second, please?
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Moving on to item 16, Grant Amendment Number C, 2176KC with the F T A, 5339 RTC Phase Two, with the Idaho Transportation Department for $489,186, cash and in-kind match of $122,297. And again, for our Resource Management Office, Kim Riley.
Thank you. This is the amendment to this agreement, which extends it for an additional year through September 30, 2023, and it also adds an additional $9,186 to the award, which will be used for the additional EV, the electronic vehicle, charging stations.
Okay. So I will move that we approve Grant Amendment Number C, 2176KC with the F T A, 5339 RTC Phase Two, and of course, I T D, in the amounts indicated in the opening of this particular agenda item. Is there a second, please?
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Item 17, Grant Amendment C, 2273KC, Performance Period Extension with the F T A, 5310 for Marketing, and Idaho, 2018-015-01, with the Idaho Transportation Department for $42,500 and a cash and kind match of $10,625. Once again, Kim Riley for the Resource Management Office.
Thank you, Kim Riley, again for the record. This is just a performance period extension, extending the award to 9/30/2023.
Okay. Bill, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, I move that we approve, approve Grant Amendment Number C, 2273KC for the Performance Period Extension with the F T A, 5310 Marketing, as articulated at the opening of this agenda item. Second, please?
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Thank you, Kim. Item 18, Grant Award Number ICDBG-22-I-05-PF, Panhandle Village Water System Improvement Project Phase Two with the Idaho Department of Commerce, for $500,000, no match. Resource Management Office. Dorian?
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Dorian Comback from the Resource Management Office, for the record. Would it be possible to flip numbers 20 and 19 and 20 on the agenda?
Well, sure.
Thank you.
Did you want to complete item 18, however?
I do, yeah.
Go right ahead.
So this is an award for, this is an award for an Idaho Community Development Block Grant, and it's being funded by the Idaho Department of Commerce. The application was approved by the Board in November of 2021, and was submitted on behalf of Panhandle Village Water System for Phase Two of their Water System Improvement Project. The award is $500,000, and there is no match required at the county.
Okay. Bill, do you want me to take it?
Sure, go ahead.
Do you have any questions?
Nah, I don't have any questions.
I move that we approve Grant Award Number ICDBG-22-I-05-PF for the Panhandle Village Water System Improvement Project Phase Two with the Idaho Department of Commerce for $500,000, no match. Second, please?
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. So, Dorian, you wanted us to flip. You want to take 20 first?
That's correct, thank you.
Go right ahead. Okay, let me introduce it. It's Board Approval Request for the Panhandle Village Water System Improvement Project Phase Two, an environmental review record, or environmental assessment as it's known. Go right ahead, Dorian.
Yes, this is for the same block grant, Idaho Department of Commerce block grant, and it requires the environmental review record be submitted and approved before the county can receive a grant agreement for the project. The review record has been completed by the certified grant administrators at Panhandle Area Council, and is now ready for approval and signature by the Board. Once it's signed, it allows the county to publish a notice that lets the public know that the environmental documents can be posted on the, are going to be posted on the county's website for a required 16-day comment period.
Okay, can we handle 19 at the same time? Can we handle them in a single motion?
That would be fine.
Okay, so item 19 is Board Approval Request for the Panhandle Village Water System Improvement Project Phase Two, and it's a Notice of Intent to Request Release of the Funds. Go right ahead, Dorian.
So this is the required public notice that I just mentioned for the Idaho Department of Commerce Community Development Block Grant, and it needs to be signed and published for the Panhandle Village Water System Phase Two project. And then, once this is published, basically, it starts the required 16-day public comment period as discussed previously.
Okay, so we have two items. And so, okay, we'll handle it in a single motion. So I move that the Board approve the request for the Panhandle Village Water System Improvement Project Phase Two, the Environmental Review Board, and proceed with approval of the Panhandle Village Water System Improvement Project Phase Two Notice of Intent to request, excuse me, request release of the funds.
I second the motion.
End of motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Moving on to item 21, which is Board Approval Request for J U B Bus Stop. I presume this is J U B Engineering Improvement Supplemental Amendment with the Resource Management Office. Go right ahead, Kim.
Yes, thank you, Kim Riley, again for the Resource Management Office. This is a $1,500 amendment for J U B engineers related to the bus stop improvements. This was for additional construction management services to address the additional site requirements that were encountered during construction, including permitting and change order management.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Excuse me, I was just shuffling papers here. I move that we approve the request by J U B Bus Stop Improvement Supplemental Amendment with the Resource Management Office.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and I'm going to move item 22 to the end, because it might take a little bit longer than the others, and I don't want to tie people up. So let's skip to item 23, M O U, which is a memorandum of understanding between Cootney County and Coeur d'Alene for the Office of Emergency Management, presumably services. Go right ahead, Sarah.
Hi, good afternoon, Sarah LaFredo, for the record. And so the purpose of this memorandum of understanding is for the use of the city of Coeur d'Alene's street and engineering department's parking lot as an emergency evacuation location for the city-linked buses from the Riverstone Transit Center, and I'm asking for your approval of this M O U.
Go right ahead, Bill.
I move that we approve the MOU between Cootney County and Coeur d'Alene, and Cootney County, City of Coeur d'Alene, and Emerg, Office of Emergency Management.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion's carried. Uh, item twenty-four, Resolution two zero two-two dash sixty-six, to surplus equipment. It's part of our asset deletion. Teresa, for the Treasurer's Office. Anyone hear from the Treasurer's Office? Okay, I think we can proceed. This is a fairly routine act, and so I will move that we approve Resolution two zero two-two dash six-six to surplus equipment as part of the asset pollution program in the Treasurer's Office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Item twenty-five, Resolution two zero two-two dash sixty-seven, exchange or tra, excuse me, trade of property for information technology. Grant, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. Grant Kinsey Network Administrator, for the record. Uh, this is just a routine deletion of a capital asset. Um, basically, we bought a new plotter and traded in our old plotter, which actually had zero value, but because we changed brands from Hewlett-Packard to Canon, Canon, um, was able to offer us about four thousand dollars traded on the old plotter. So, we're just looking for a resolution to, uh, remove the old plotter from inventory.
Okay. Bill, go ahead.
I move that we approve Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-two sixty-seven, exchange slash trade property for IT.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Item twenty-six, which I guess is rather bittersweet, Resolution two zero two-two dash seven-one, to retire our K-9 Shade, our Black Lab, who has, I think, exceeded more than his share of action, from adult misdemeanor probation. Keith Hutchinson, go right ahead, Keith.
Keith, for the record, and K-9 Shade was laying on the floor, showing a lot of energy. Uh, you know, it comes to, come for you, Board, it's kind of hard to come for you, but he turned twelve on Saturday, and he's not hurt or anything like that, but serving, you know, two-plus years overseas, and a couple of years in Spear Lake, and then, you know, five-plus years in the county. I have all my fingers, he's still alive, he's alive, so I think he's done pretty good.
What was his principal job?
His principal job was explosive detection.
What?
Explosive detection. And so, the biggest thing with that is, is we were there before people got there, there 'd be all some dignitary stuff, uh, Western governors, funerals, things like that, that we had. So I'll bring up before you the resolution. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Ferguson, also, for helping out with this, appreciate that. Uh, to retire K-9 Shade, uh, to my custody, and he'll live his life out, but he'll still be walking around a little bit, just in community service, saying, hey.
How old is he now?
He turned twelve last Saturday.
Twelve, so.
Yeah, he's in good health and stuff, but it's just time.
Yeah, that's very cool. He's a neat, neat dog.
A good dog and a great handler. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I move that we.
Motion, please, Bill.
I move that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-two, seventy-one, retirement of K-1 Shade, uh, from adult misdemeanor probation. And he should get his badge and his gun.
Yeah.
I think he'd prefer a biscuit.
Second.
Then he gets his biscuit and his cheeseburger. Give you people food now.
Okay.
I, I seconded.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion is carried, so let's move back up to item, I'm losing track. Okay, item twenty-two.
Shade will be missed more than most people.
Shade goes, yeah, whatever.
Okay. Item twenty-two, Professional Consulting and Appraisal Services of Highland Appraisal Inc. Uh, just to refresh everybody's memory, we did take a vote last week, it was a two-to-one vote to approve the hiring of Highland. I voted along with Commissioner Leslie Duncan to do so. I had some concerns after the fact. I asked Bayla to hold off, uh, on signing the contract, which of course ultimately we'd have to do. I did have a series of questions, uh, for the, uh, Chief Deputy Assessor, for Ben. Uh, he did answer my questions verbally and also in writing. Uh, I do have a couple of other concerns that I want to raise. Uh, there is another contract that is in effect, and I think, I, I probably get the initials wrong, XTR, you have a consulting contract that is currently in force. Can somebody enlighten me?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Ben Krotinger, Chief Deputy Assessor, for the record. I believe you're talking about XTR?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what, what specifically would you?
Okay, so, yeah. Okay, what is the situation with XTR? Is it open-ended? Is it completed? What's remaining? What exactly are they doing?
Commissioner Philios, this is Bayla Kovak, Assessor. Uh, I'll speak to that.
Yeah.
That is a contract that we have put in place. You might recall that, um, at the close of the calendar year twenty twenty-one, uh, we had conversations.
Right.
The Treasurer, um, I don't know to what extent the clerk was involved in it, but I did circulate communications to IT, to the Clerk's Office, to the Treasurer's Office. This is a contract in regards to the computer system that Cootney County uses. It is the joint system that, it will, it actually begins with the CAMAS system, which, um, that is the Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal System. Um, there are some issues in that system, in the way that it was implemented here at Cootney County. Uh, that data then goes into the, uh, Ammentum system, the Treasurer's Office portion of the database. Uh, there are numerous process errors and issues. This is a historical issue that goes way back to the implementation and the failure that occurred in the year two thousand and fourteen. The system failed. Um, so, uh, there are various processes that occur outside the system. There are various manual labor processes, set-aside processes that have to occur, and so we, uh, looked to contract with XTR. They are the well-known experts, uh, they are, and they have a proprietary agreement. We have a letter from Ammentum, which is the, uh, Harris is the owner of Ammentum. We have a letter from them that basically acknowledges that if we don't use XTR when we do work on our system, we have voided our warranty with, uh, Ammentum. And so they are renowned experts. Um, Kelby Moore, who works for XTR, his father is the man who invented ProVal. Um, and so they're, they came in to help us address those issues, the various issues that we have, which reside primarily on the Treasurer's side of the database and the system. There are other problems that occur within the Tre, uh, the Treasurer's Office, but most of the problems are in the Assessor's side. To my understanding, uh, XTR has a separate contract now for maintenance and support with the IT Department at Cootney County. Um, and, uh, they also have a contract with, my understanding is they're working on a contract with the Treasurer's Office. Um, and so our contract was set up as a master agreement. It's, it's, uh, um, it's a modular contract that we can add to. It's a time and materials contract, and it allows us to address those, those issues that are known, or that they're going to be identified. Uh, we have done three modifications to that contract. Um, the first, the first, the initial contract was to basically do an assessment and a scope of what the issues were. Uh, they got well into that, and they were able to identify some problems, and they began, uh, working on that, but they had to add more hours, which is what we did, so there's a modification number one that we did, and that allowed them to address some of the, again, highly manual labor, highly work-intensive, uh, processes, uh, which is something that they got pretty much all the way through, when in, uh, towards the end of June, I had IT, I had a meeting in my office with the staff of the Clerk's Office, the Auditor's Office, my staff, and IT, and that's when it was first learned and revealed to me that Cootney County no longer has the resident expertise and knowledge on how to develop the personal property, uh, replacement money, um, role. That is a unique process this year, that was only done this year, and that's because of how, um, legislation that occurred in the prior year. Um, but Cootney County had done that once before in two thousand and thirteen, when the replacement money exemption, uh, excuse me, the personal property business, business personal property, um, exemption went from zero to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, it, it took a lot of work to get that done. The person that did that was Stan Brennan. He retired in twenty twenty. So since we had no expertise to do that, we moved to modify that contract, um, and brought XTR in, and they helped us get that done. That started at the end of June, and it went all the way through the end of July and into August, when the personal property replacement money role was delivered to me on August fourth, which was after the, um, August first due date, which, which the Auditor's Office did need that for calculating the levy rates and the budgets. Two other roles that were, were delivered late, uh, and that is, um, the development, uh, new construction role, which was furnished to me late by IT, and then there was the, um, the new, uh, the estimated sub role, which was also furnished to me late by IT. Uh, they went through their processes, but, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit off track. The contract with XTR is still in place. We need it. We need it to.
Okay.
Address and modify the systems, the problems with the system, and that's what we're doing.
I've got a, a couple of questions. What's, what's billing year-to-date from XTR?
Uh, I don't have, I wasn't prepared for that. I don't have that answer off the top of my head.
No? What was the billing for the month of July?
Well, the, the, the tot, well, we have, it's about fifteen thousand dollars. Um, we have, I believe the total dollar value of that contract was about initially forty-five thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, I think it went up to about sixty thousand dollars. I don't think we're above that. Um, I, I, I don't believe it's above sixty to seventy thousand dollars.
The other thing is, I wanted to hear from Keith.
Okay.
From the, uh, if you have time. I'd appreciate it.
Well, in, in seeing this item come up, we, we reviewed, uh, the contracts with the assessors that, uh, that consulting firms have with, with the Assessor's Office, and specifically the XTR contract, and as far as I can tell with this old agreement, there is no cap on the amount of the, the liability, uh, that the county could incur. It's strictly a hundred and seventy-five dollar an hour rate, uh, that XTR charges us, um, as they work through our issues. There has been a new agreement with XTR signed. It, it appears to be through, uh, IT, uh, is now managing that contract. Again, that's, um, a guaranteed hundred and seventy, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, uh, and it's billed out in what appears to be thirty-six thousand dollars in dollars. So, um, that, that's the information I have. Regarding, regarding the issues with the system, uh, because the Treasurer can't speak to the fact, is not here in order to defend themselves in terms of what XTR is doing for them in the system, I, I kind of take exception to what Bayla is saying, that all the system issues for Ammentum is on the Treasurer's side. I don't believe that to be the truth, but, um.
If I.
The Treasurer is not here to, to necessarily, to necessarily state that. On, on the, um, in, in terms of the Auditor's involvement in this contract, we failed to sign that contract, um, so that, that's.
But I, I'd like to speak to those issues, and if I actually said that most of the issues were on the Treasurer's side. I misspoke. Actually, most of the, most of the issues are on the Assessor's side, so I apologize if I misspoke and I said the opposite. Most of the problems are in the Assessor's side of the system, and it is, it is definitely structured as an indefinite quantity, indefinite, um, delivery contract, um, but it is, there is monitoring that goes on with that, and, and it's modular, and we brought it before the Board. Um, as we monitor, they will not exceed the hours. It is capped by the hours that are set in the contract, and, and right now, the hours are capped and limited. So it's, it's not unlimited. Anytime we'd want to make a change to it, we'd come back before the Board of County Commissioners, which is what policy is, and that's how we would do it, so.
Okay, so, uh, let me back up to Keith again. Uh, understood. So Keith, do you have concerns with XTR and/or its contract?
No, I don't. I just, it, you just have to recognize that there's no cap with that contract, so, um, if, if you're looking to monitor that contract, as well as the upcoming Highland, you should specifically state in the contract a maximum amount of work, and at what point the Board wants to be notified about, uh, you know, additional work to be provided on those contracts. I think it's really dangerous to leave an open-end contract.
Who, who wrote those contracts?
Bayla, I think, was highly involved in the first contract with XTR.
The con, that was all presented to the Board of County Commissioners. It was explained to the Board of County Commissioners that it was an indefinite quantity, indefinite delivery contract, but for set number of hours. So I take exception to what Keith is saying. There are defined hours. You cannot exceed the number of hour, billable hours in the contract. So that is a cap. And we're, we, we, since we cannot exceed that cap, we would have to bring anything, any change, back to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board is the, um, responsible for changing the contract, if in fact the Board agreed to that.
Okay, so Bayla, if there is a cap, then there's probably also an end date to the contract. Is that correct?
That is not correct.
Yeah, it is.
Because, because part of the contract entails discovery. Um, the system is extremely complex. Um, XTR, as much of experts as they are, um, they did not have a hand in developing Cootney County's system. Um, as, as was explained to me and, and documented, the, when, when that system was implemented, um, Cootney County, and this goes back to before my time, but I have it documented in a memo, and I, I did not anticipate this question coming up, or I would have had it with me. Um, Cootney County developed its system in a way that, um, Ammentum could not support it. And so a decision was made.
Okay.
Back then, to go ahead and go forward with the system, and, and, and it resulted in the failure and the problems that we have today.
Okay, so let's say this, okay, so, from your perspective, clearly there's a value to XTR. I get it. Now, if for any reason, we decide, or you recommend, whichever, to terminate the contract, I don't know that we'd need to, but can that be done?
Any contract can be terminated. There's always termination provisions, and the contract was reviewed by legal counsel. I don't imagine that legal counsel would have, would have given legal review and approval if it had provisions in it that could not be terminated.
I, I, I understand that, but the thing is, what is it? Is it after three years? Is it five years? Is it annual?
It's a discovery contract, and we're using it to discover the problems. I have, since the inception of the contract, discovered no less than four or five major other issues, which I have not yet brought back before the Board. The system has problems, and it, and it's causing lots of issues and loss of waste. Um, and, and that's the issue that I intend to bring you back before the Board of County Commissioners. I will bring it back in a phased manner. Um, right now, the phase that was in front of us was to develop the personal property exemption role, which was done, and, um, XTR diverted their resources and their, and their engineers from the main focus of assessing and discovering the issues, and now there's a few hours remaining where they're going to go back to resolving that issue. The, the biggest issue in our system right now is the end-of-the-year roles, and that's what's in front of us, and that's what they're trying to work on. We are, right now, working on getting the system tested for the fixes that XTR has already discovered and has already worked on.
Understood. And when did you say we executed this contract?
I believe, and I'm going off of memory, I believe it was in, initially in Fe-February? January or February? I mean, I think it was early February. It might have been executed at the end of twenty twenty-one in December. I don't recall. But it was very early in the, in this year, or late in last year.
Okay, so let me swing back to Keith for a moment. Uh, Keith, are you there?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Um, I realize the Treasurer isn't present, but you know, I don't like for this stuff to drag on ad infinitum, because we've got to make decisions, we've got to move forward. Is there, I, is there any compelling reason? Okay, the reason I brought this up, let me back up, is because we're looking at two hundred with a cap of, I think, of, a revisit of Highland at two hundred thousand dollars, and I think we've capped it at two sixty, if my memory serves me right. The reason I brought up the XTR, and I'm not questioning the value of it, is, wait a minute, do we have another, a potentially open-ended contract here, and are we running up expenses here and maybe losing a handle on it? From your perspective, is it a valuable effort?
Who are you directing that question to, Commissioner?
So.
I'm, I'm sorry, the question's, the question's for Keith.
Okay. So are you, are you, are you talking about the upcoming? So are you, are you, are you talking about the upcoming Highland contract, or are you talking about the XTR?
No, no, no. No, no, not Highland, not Highland, XTR.
I, I think XTR is a valuable service. It's just, you know, it, I don't see any caps on work there. Highland there is, but again, it, the question is, they're, they're coming and doing work that, that, you know, assessor employees have done in the past on the Highland side. That's different than what, the issues that XTR is, is doing.
Okay. So let's put XTR aside for the moment. Are you saying, and I'm really not trying to put you on the spot, but are you saying that you have concerns with Highland?
Whether that's the best value for your money versus fill open positions in order to do, do the assessments, that, you know, that's, that's a decision the board has to make in terms of the, of the value of that. But that work has been done by employees in the past.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry, say again?
I'm, I'm just saying, those, those valuations have been done by employees in the past, and now we're, now we're outsourcing that, that service. That, those are valuations that are going to have to, are, are we going to, is that just a Band-Aid, or is that something that we're going to look at outsourcing for, for a long time? So that, that, that's my.
And Ben, Ben had something to say.
Understood. Yeah, go ahead, Bela. Oh, Ben, I'm sorry, either one.
Thank you. Afternoon again. Ben Crowder, Chief Deputy Assessor. I have the President of Highland Appraisal here, Darcy, and I wanted him to speak on this. Please.
Yeah, this is Darcy Mog, President of Highland Appraisal. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, just do a quick, I know everybody's time is, is valuable, but I've got a little bit of history that, that I think everyone in this room needs to, needs to understand, is ProVal, when we first set it up, and when I say "we," I worked with the Tax Commission at the time to help, help ProVal get set up in 36 of the 44 counties. And at the time, we tried at the state to make all of the counties have the same process so that it would be easier and more financially feasible for the counties to, to move on and do what they need to do. This was 25 years ago, that we replaced the new system, which is ProVal, and it's 25 years later. Well, fast forward 25 years later, we have used the program. Amentum is the fourth or fifth owner of this program. They've, Amentum is in the process of combining ProVal with some of the other systems that they've acquired over the years. And they're, they're literally trying to put in a, a better system that will incorporate all of the good features of the products that they own. And this is, this is all told to me by XR, and XTR is, is, actually, it stands for Exthompson Rooter Employees, is what that stands for. And to make a long story short, they hope to work with Cootney County to, to devise a, or, and the State Tax Commission to, to make a better, a better program for the entire state. So while it, it may seem like they're costing a lot of money, they're also fixing a lot of things that, that should be fixed. So then that segues into where I come in. Bela called me early on in the year, while we were still working on the 2022 role, and asked if I could come and, and help him out and finish his five-year plan. Well, I was not able to do that because we were finishing up a five-year plan in one of our other counties that we work in, and so I just didn't have the personnel, I just didn't have the time. And then when XTR approached me and said, hey, Bela's a little behind on, on their appraisal, and that's no, that's, that's no uncommon thing. As, as you know, you drive down the street, see help wanted, help wanted signs everywhere. It's the same process in, in the assessor's office. The difference is, you can hand somebody a spatula and teach them how to flip a burger in about 15 minutes, but you can't handle, you can't hand somebody a computer and say, here's a complex appraisal process that needs to happen, and please get it done by next week. So what Bela and I and Ben discussed was their current situation at the assessor's office, which they're starting the new five-year plan, and their option is to take everyone off of their five-year plan and move them to the new construction. Because new construction, at this point in time, is very critical. It's a time-sensitive thing. After December 15th.
Let me, let me ask you a question, though. Are the services you're providing, are they going to be ongoing like this forever and ever amen, or is this a Band-Aid?
This is a Band-Aid. This is something that, and we do this all over the state. We.
That's what I want. I'm just interested in Cootney County.
Sure.
Why weren't you called by Rich Hauser?
Because at the time, from what I understand, and I've known Rich for a lot of years, they weren't in, in need of appraisal work. But during our discussion, we came up with the best way to, to utilize Highland Appraisal would be to look at these new houses. There's, there's a lot of extra work in doing a new house as opposed to one that's already in the system. You have to research, grab the plans.
Did we ever have the personnel that were able to do that?
As far as I know, they were.
And where are they now?
Retired. And the other problem is there's significant increase in new construction, and that, as, as the new houses come online, we need to put them on the occupancy role, and that's.
And some, some of these employees just plain quit? Not everybody retired.
Well.
Is that accurate?
I have no idea.
Bela, is that accurate?
It's not accurate.
Okay, well, tell me.
There are occasions where some employees have quit to get higher-paying jobs, and that's because Cootney County is not known for paying very well. So that has been an issue, yes. But the vast majority of all the people that left here are retirees.
I'm just, I'm just not happy. Chris, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, let me, okay, so let, let, this is, let me ask this question, and please keep the answer brief. While Highland is performing these 1,600 appraisals, and a goodly number of them are going to be in the cities, and those are relatively easy, that's actually where most of the new constructions occur. While they're doing that, and this is a question for either Ben or Bela, what are our appraisers doing?
Our appraisers are working on the reval. They're working on the revaluation. Part of what we're having, the work we're going to give to Highland is the new construction. They're different, it's all part of the, the reval program, but there are different components of it. If, if we, in order to get, if we didn't hire Highland in order to get the work done, we would have to take the individuals that we have and refocus them away from the work that they have to do to get the, the reval work done right now. And so it, it would fragment the workforce. This is in the best interest of Cootney County. It's in the best interest of capturing all of the properties so that we can build the roles, and so we can have the appropriate level of funding and, and property tax.
Fair enough. Okay.
Commissioners.
I think I'm going to end.
Chris, Dave Ferguson here. You asked a question earlier about the termination clause in the XTR contract. I was able to find, I was able to find the contract, and it says that either party for convenience may terminate this agreement upon 30 days' written notice to the other party with no obligation other than to pay for services already rendered. So that's, that's in line with the typical review that we do for, you know, we like to see contracts that are either terminable at will or upon non-appropriation, and this one has a termination for convenience clause, so.
Understood. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Bill, any final, Bill, any final thoughts?
Well, I just, I, I haven't changed much from where I was last business meeting. I just see us hiring outside help at, for a lot of money, $200,000 plus expenses. Let me finish, please. Is a heck of a lot of money to, to be spending to put a Band-Aid on Bela's job because he's not doing it.
That's, that's a false statement.
Okay. Well, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay. Bela, you've had, you've had your case, okay? Let Bill finish, please.
Well, it's just that if we had other elected officials not performing their job, would we hire outside consultants to do their job? And I don't think we would.
That's how you're characterizing it, Bill, but that's a false characterization.
Okay. I appreciate your opinion, Bela, but I, I think that you should leave, and I might be very much more disposed of putting a Band-Aid on the assessor's office, because we have put a burden on all the people in the assessor's office and a terrible burden on all the taxing districts. That's my opinion. Sure.
Okay. So let, let me wing in here. I had a series of questions for Ben. He answered them, as I said earlier, both verbally and in writing, and I'm pretty satisfied with his answers. I, I, I don't like what's going on. I don't want to revisit it at this point because it's, it's almost old news, but I think Bill makes a valid point in that if it were another elected officials, would we be doing the same thing? But then again, there is a task that has to be performed, it has to be completed, it has to be completed on time if the task, excuse me, if the taxing districts are going to do their job. And as uncomfortable as I am, and this has nothing to do with the character or competence of Highland, but rather the events that have transpired within the county and specifically the assessor's office. But I'm going to reaffirm my vote to proceed with Highland. I'm not happy about it, I don't like it, but I'm not going to punish the residents of Cootney County with the actions of, of a single elected official. And so since we're not necessarily required for revote, the vote of last week stands, and at this time, I will open up for any other public comment.
I will say just one more thing, Chris. I, this amount of money, when you spread this around over the taxpayers of Cootney County, it's not insubstantial, and, and there seems to be no end in sight. I'm sorry, go ahead. Identify yourself.
You'll go ahead, Ben.
Once again, this is Darcy with Highland Appraisal, and I, I just want to move back to the point, and you, you did mention that it is a time-critical matter, and if, if this job doesn't get done, it, the county will miss out on that, that revenue that they count on to, to increase budgets that are, are critical in today's market. So this really is, is more of a, if you, if you do the appraisals and you have even $200,000 per house for 1,600 appraisals, and that, and once again, 1,600 appraisals is an estimate that, that we haven't really confirmed. There, there could be more, there could be less, but we knew that we'd never get the contract signed on open-end deal, obviously. I mean, that's, and we also have the 30-day clause. If you don't like what Highland's doing, we're, we're good to go.
And the things I'm saying are in no way anything negative about your company. I've heard your company's a great company. No, no, no problem with your company, so.
I'd like to make a closing comment, and my closing comment is that, yes, $200,000, $260,000 seems like a lot of money. I would say, in comparison, the time to do that assessment was years ago, when the system was set up the way it was, when it put Cootney County on the path that it was on. The Board of County Commissioners does have a responsibility to supervise, but they were asleep at the wheel when the contract was put together and the system was developed. Tremendous costs have been incurred, tremendous costs have been, have been incurred.
It was somebody else's fault, not yours.
I, I wasn't here.
All right. Is there anybody else or public comments outside of the assessors or Highland or us? Any other public comment, please? Bill, is anybody coming forward or no?
No, everybody's quiet.
Okay. 3:26. My dog's gone. No more small dogs, guys, they're too loud. Anyway, 3:26, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Excellent.